Promise.
Oh, we're going out anyways.
Yeah, we're going in there.
Yeah. All right, whatever.
All right, we'll call the Monday, May 2nd, school committee meeting to order. The first two items on the agenda are executive sessions. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to develop deployment of security personnel or devices pursuant to mass uses general law, chapter 30A, section 21A4, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the safety of the students and staff, and strategies with respect to negotiation with non-union personnel, the superintendent of schools pursuant of mass usage general law, chapter 30A, section 21A2, and to take any necessary action. Do I have a motion? Kim, Ms. Hunt, do I have a second?
Second?
Mrs. Burgess. All right, so then we'll come.
I'll call for the vote.
Oh, yeah, vote call.
Yes.
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 Yes, awesome. All right, now the school committee has voted to go into the executive session at 6:32 PM for the purpose stated, when the school committee comes out of executive session, it'll be to reconvene their regular meeting. Awesome. She's also like. All right. We already.
Like she cracks up. The fact that we're all good. You're gonna kill yourself.
All right, we're coming back out of executive session at 7:04 to start the meeting. So let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our next item is a moment of silence for William P. Singalani.
Willard.
Willard, sorry.
I mean, Wilbert, I'm sorry, Wilbert.
Wilbert Singalani. He was, he served the district for 18 years from Plymouth Carver High School Vice President from 1965 to 1966, and then Plymouth Carver High School Principal from 1966 to 1983. He retired in June of 1983 after 35 years of public education. He led a student body of 1,040 when he started in 1965, which grew to 2,304 students at the time of his retirement. So would you please all join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Now, do I have anybody here who wants to comment from community members? All right, so you know one, we'll move on. We'll have the South High School Student Representative, so Brianna.
So first off, we'd like to congratulate the four-by-100-meter shuttle hurdle relay team of Katie Romanoff, I didn't say that right, Megan Galarani, Jaden Andrews, and Maddie Sessler for winning their race in a New Division II state record time of 1 minute 4.23 seconds, and that was yesterday, and they actually qualified for the New Balance Nationals for the second consecutive year, and that will take place in North Carolina on June 18th, 2018, or 2016. The junior prom is on Friday, and it's going to start at 6:00 PM. It is at the Indian Pond in Kingston. We're excited to celebrate this special night with our juniors. Dismissals will begin at 11:00 AM, so make sure you have a note in prior to then. Plymouth South High School's early education and care senior students all competed in the Massachusetts and Rhode Island Moose Association Youth Awareness Congress Scholarship. The competition consists of brainstorming a topic that will empower children to make healthy choices. Each student had to present their lesson to a group of children at least three times, and their lesson had to be 20 minutes in length. At the end of the lessons, the students created a unique portfolio which was sent to be judged. Plymouth South student Olivia Helen took first place in a $1,000 scholarship, and Colleen Begley took second place in a $500 scholarship. They are currently on their way home from the International Youth Awareness Congress in Williamsburg, Virginia. While the weather does not feel like spring, our spring athletes and coaches have done a great job with the difficult weather and lack of facilities. We are still excelling and would like to thank Fortress Field, North High School, PCIS, PSMS, and the Eel River Beach Club for hosting our many teams this spring. Senior activities are about to get underway, and we recently mailed a reminder letter home to all parents of seniors. May is a very busy month, and we encourage families to check our Google Calendar and social media calendars for regular update. Our APR show kicked off the event last week and was very successful. AP testing began today and will last for the next two weeks. We would like to wish all the students good luck, and the South students are testing at Camp Clark this year. The Skills USA students had another successful weekend at their competition, and DUCO students did a great job at the Nationals in Nashville recently. The results will be shared at the next school committee meeting. Student council elections have been moved to this Friday instead of last Friday in order to allow more time for students to campaign, so make sure you're getting your campaigns into Ms. King. Student council has also recently conducted two very successful fundraisers. On Saturday, we raised over $100 with our second Savers Clothing Drive of the Year. Also, we have raised roughly $1,200 for the National Marine Life Center with our Adopt a Seal fundraiser and advisories. In closing, the students report that we had a very successful assembly on April 25th with Chris Heron. Chris visited South four years ago, but this time delivered a very different message. While still focused on substance abuse, he truly captured a message about valuing yourself as an individual. Many students and staff were positively affected by his presentation, and we have many follow-up activities underway already.
Nice and busy. Now we'll go with our North update from Isabel.
So we will have junior prom on May 27th at Lake Pearl and Rentham, and it'll be from 6:00 to 11:00, so tickets have already gone on sale, and they will continue until May 6th, and our ticket cost for this year is $85 a person. Our bus applications were also sent home on April 8th, so we encourage everyone to take advantage of this and get them in soon. And our student council elections will take place on Friday, May 12th, and the students will use, the students will air their speeches prior to the election, so they'll be airing them next week. Our North Voices 2016 concert will be on Saturday, May 21st at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center, and we also had AP testing begin today, so all the testing will take place at our high school at Plymouth North, and it will continue until Thursday, May 13th. And we have a lot of upcoming senior activities this month, so we have Senior May Fest, which is May 18th, Senior Hypnotist Night, which is May 25th, the Last Day of Classes, which is May 26th, Class Day, which is May 27th at 9:00 AM in the Harold E. Rogers Gymnasium at Plymouth North, the Senior Athlete Awards Day, May 22nd at 2:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center, Senior Dinner Dance at the Spirit of Boston on Tuesday, May 31st, Compocation on June 2nd at 6:30, graduation rehearsals, rehearsals, May 31st and June 2nd from 8:00 to 12:00, and graduation is on Saturday, June 4th at 1:00 at the North High School. And we will also have our High Honor Celebration on May 18th at 7:30 AM. So students maintaining high levels for either term will be allowed to attend. And then we also just announced our student athletes of the month. So for female athletes, for lacrosse, we have Molly Lovett, Nikki Ross for softball, Chloe Gates for tennis, Kaitlin Haley for track. And for male athletes, for baseball, we have Joey Walsh, Dan Taco for tennis, Aaron Chase for track, and Declan Tierney for boys lacrosse. And Luke Markucci and Michaela Yee were the Congressional Art Winners this year, so we'd like to congratulate them on their achievements. And over spring recess, we had a lot of students go away on school run trips, so we had many go on the French and Spanish exchange trip, and the Spanish exchange trip was the first one this year, and they had a lot of fun, and we'd like to thank the teachers that went along with them. And then we also had the Dominican Republic Service Learning Trip in which the students planted trees, and they helped with the neighboring communities, and a lot of, they had a lot of fun, and we'd like to also thank the students and teachers involved on that trip.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much for that update. Stayin' nice and busy. The next piece we have is our old business. So have anybody who has any updates for old business? No? All right, new business? Any updates, any additions? No. All right, so reports in the Report Room Superintendent, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, I just have a few items to report on tonight. Just want to give everyone an update. Last week, we had the opportunity of having Katie Greer in the district. She visited with all our elementary schools and talked to our students about social activities on the Internet. I think there are a lot of our families that are dealing with social media and how they interact with their children on social media, so we had a presentation by Katie. She visited all eight elementary schools last week. In addition, she did an evening program at Plymouth North High School, and great feedback from our staff and parents that attended the evening session. I want to concur with the South High School Chris Heron visit. I was there for part of the presentation, and I will tell you that I think, you know, it was a very compelling presentation that Chris Heron delivered, and I do agree that he has changed it dramatically from a program where he talked about the downfall of his basketball career and what happened after his basketball career to how his basketball career really is long and gone, but the message is really what can you do in your life to make some good decisions and not go down a road that you can't turn back from. And I think that it was very compelling to the students, very emotional, because I think now with a lot of the issues that students are dealing with, with families and so on, regarding drugs and so on, I think people kind of know people that have been through difficulty, and I think they put themselves in that position, and I think there were moments in that presentation where students are just thinking about people they know or family members that they know that might be struggling with issues and certain things, and I think it was really a compelling presentation. Keep in mind that we have worked with Chris and his staff and also our own staff to be able to help students that might feel a little uneasy after the presentation, so it was a, it's a great presentation, but it's, you know, we, our concern is what do we do after? And how do we help our community and our students after the fact? So like Brianna said, there are things happening in our school to continue to bring that to life and work with some of the things that are presented to us. The next presentation that I had an opportunity to attend was Dr. Joe Schrenz Drug Story Theater piece that came to North, and that was well-attended, well-done. Students did a wonderful job with that. And the last thing I have tonight is presenting an update on the wastewater treatment developments here in town. I was at a meeting this morning, and the next phase of repair, which is going to be the beginning of the permanent repair, will begin in about two weeks. Mr. Costin, Mr. Montron, representative from our bus company, is going to go to a meeting this week. We'll be attending that with the community leaders, DPW department, to take a look at the phasing of the project, because they hope to do a lot of the major intersection work before the summer, and that is going to just be very quick. So our concern is transportation delays, so we'll get a better idea Wednesday on what's going to develop, and as soon as I find out, we'll get information out to the school committee, our bus company, and also the community at large, because the town is going to try to get this information out in some form of social media, the newspaper, just to try to help to avoid certain areas of town. So that will happen within the next, within the next two weeks. So we will bring information to you. Of course, Mr. Costin will be working with our bus company to really try to work through a lot of these North Plymouth and West Plymouth downtown bus routes that get clogged up coming off of Route 3 and also in and around downtown areas. So we will give you updates, and hopefully we can weather this out before the end of the year, and just the last thing is this is the push to the end, so hopefully we'll have a little warm-up in the weather, not too warm too fast, but it's been a little cold start to the spring. So we're getting ready for graduations, and I know that our students are really excited to be walking that line, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next is correspondence, so we don't have any, right, Ms. Hunt? Okay. And the next piece is our update from Manomet Elementary.
Yes, tonight we have Dr. Frain and his school council. I was visiting with them earlier tonight, and they are very anxious and very excited to be presenting in front of you tonight. So welcome, Manomet. Welcome.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate our school committee team from our recent fundraiser feud event. 16 teams and you emerged victorious, so congratulations, and.
It was fun, thank you.
Thank you. It helped us raise a lot of funds for our playground effort, and we're well on our way, so thank you for participating in that event. So tonight, we'd like to just follow up. About a year ago, we had the Traveling School Committee over at Manomet Elementary, and that's when we presented our 2015 to 2017 School Improvement Plan. We wanted to give you an update as to some of the areas that we've already completed, some of the areas that we're working on, and some of them that are year-two pieces of the plan. I'm joined this evening from my left, Jay Long is one of our parent representatives, Lauren Lesher is a moderate special needs teacher at Manomet, Christine Kane is our community representative, and Debbie Miller is a moderate special needs teacher at Manomet School also. So we've got four goal areas on our plan, four different goal areas at Manomet. So Goal One, Lauren is going to take it from there and tell you a little bit about where we are with Goal One up to this point.
So Goal Number One is to strive for continually more efficient and effective use of our rapidly-evolving technological tools that are available to our school with working with our students. We've taken several actions this year, the first of which was reviewing the 2015, 2000 through 2018 Plymouth Public Schools Technology Plan. Most specifically, the technology plan states that we're a Google Apps for Education District, and the applications have been beneficial to our school in several ways, and particularly in the special education realm. The Read and Write app enables students to access grade-level material, and in several ways. One manner allows students who may not be able to decode grade-level material due to decoding issues, they can comprehend new content and also apply their comprehension skills through the use of text-to-speech software. This enables independence in the classroom, and it's discreet. The second actions that we've taken are through the integration of our PBLs, which are Project-Based Learning Experiences. By the end of this school year, all grades from K to 5 will have all elements of their project-based learning experiences posted within our MES drive. Each grade level has an MES drive, and as of now, they have three separate PBLs that are constructed, and during this year, there's been a lot of time that's been allocated for teachers to get together and collaborate with also specialists on integrating technology within each of those PBLs. A great example of integrating technology within our school for a PBL that's been done this year was the Grade Four PBL, in which students researched a particular state, and then they demonstrated their knowledge through a Google tour during our international night. The project, as the technology plan states, engages students in their research as they're designing their tour. Spectators really enjoyed something seen that was different, and it empowered students, no matter what their independence level, to access the material. The third bullet includes our increase in the number of Chromebooks and using those Chromebooks to get to other grade levels. Historically, we've had the Chromebooks with grades 3 to 5 to get them comfortable through technology. This year, we've also been enabled with the use of a grant of 20 extra Chromebooks with our total of 84 for grade 2 to now be proficient on the Chromebooks. And there's, we're also launching a Grade Five to One Buddy Program, in which grade five students will sit down with grade one students and demonstrate some of the different features that are there. Also, we have the newly licensed story program. We talked briefly about it last year as it was introduced, but this year, we've truly seen that not only is it engaging, it allows students to select their, for different interest levels, but teachers can also select texts that are unique and at a student's level a little bit more discreetly.
Thank you very much. So moving on to Grade Two, Debbie Miller is going to handle that one.
Thank you. Hi. I would like to bring up today on Goal Number Two, which is to widen, thank you, to widen and deepen the opportunities for our students to have a meaningful and authentic voice in the culture of our school community. There are four areas that I would like to highlight for you, the first being our Manomet Pride Assemblies. These assemblies have been occurring every other month at our school, and the acronym stands for Perseverance, Respect, Integrity, Determination, and Excellence. Last month, we had the pleasure of having Dr. Maestis as our guest at our Determination Assembly. He shared his thoughts on what determination means to him with our boys and girls. The kids thoroughly enjoyed our present, your presentation, our presentation together, and we want to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
The students, at this month, the months have gone on, these assemblies have incorporated more student input and ownership in the planning of them. This has taken the form of student-themed posters, videos, and some role-playing activities, which I'm hoping you enjoy. The kids had a fun time that day performing for you, I think, to demonstrate their understanding of the PRIDE acronym. We're currently in the planning stages of our Fifth Pride Assembly under the theme of excellence, and this will take place in June. The second area of student involvement I'd like to highlight is the increased presence and frequency of our Husky TV throughout the school. Under the training of our EdTV liaison, Ms. Melvoiny, our students are learning skills such as directing, producing, editing, and interviewing, among others. Some videos that have been shared on our school website include the Town Music Festivals, our Robotics Rally intro, and a glimpse of the Simple Machines projects created by our Grade Four students. These students are both highly motivated and independent within this program. The third bullet speaks about our MES Student Council. At this time, we have approximately 35 of our fifth grade leaders serving our school community. We hope to continue to formalize their work as well, increase the frequency of it during this next upcoming school year. And the final bullet I'd like to highlight is our school newspaper called the Manomet Times, which the students have published. They are hard at work on the next edition and have enjoyed writing about areas of interest happening all around. So as you can see, we're working hard to provide opportunities for our students to have a meaningful voice in our school. Thank you.
Thank you, and Christine Kane is going to address Goal Three.
All right. Goal Number Three is to further extend the working connections and partnerships that exist between our staff and families in an effort to best coordinate support on behalf of our students. During this school year, we conducted our first two parent forums that were outlined within our School Improvement Plan. One of these was geared toward families, and we introduced them into, that were new to our Manomet School community within the last two years. We also held our second, which had to do with testing, and it was to help provide some context and background for all the testing that we do statewide and locally. It was important to give, you know, the parents an explanation of why we do these assessments, and give them a little bit of the background that comes with the testing that their children will be taking. Also, for the second straight year, Manomet has hosted a meet-and-greet ice cream social right before the start of school. It's well-attended, it's a great way for our children and parents to kind of be in a relaxed environment, get to know their teacher, come and see their classroom, come and meet some other classmates, in kind of a more, less anxiety-provoking setting than that first day of school. So that's been great, and I think that will continue in years to come, and it's great to get the parents involved with the children right before the start of school.
Very much. And Goal Four, to utilize some of the brain-friendly learning research and a lot of the research we see around learning styles and try to enhance our pedagogy that way. This is a goal that we're addressing during year two of our plan. One of the ways that we're looking to do that this next year is to focus on universal design and learning, which is a lot of, a lot of those same tenets in terms of how do we get down to the individual student level? How do we get down to the individual learning modalities of students one by one, and try to look to see how we can best target them? In speaking with Diana Rosetti at the district level, she feels very strongly about this particular book, and asking her what was a, what was a good option for us as a staff to take on through grade-level time and staff meeting time as to sort of help ground this work and give us some focus on it. UDL now by Katie Novak is highly recommended for that purpose, so we're going to be using that as a staff during this next year to help ground some of that work that we're doing. Again, during in-service time, staff meeting time, and grade-level time, we're going to have, have that as one of our focuses. And then another piece of that that is coming up in October at the district level, Lisa Dirker is coming to talk about this particular area, and that'll be a nice opportunity during one of our in-services at the district level to build on, on some of that discussion and help launch us into the rest of the year with the work that we're doing on that. Many staff that have been here for seven or eight years or more remember some of the other work that we've done in this area, so this is sort of rekindling some of that. Some people still implement a lot of those different strategies from that previous professional development, but this will help build on that and help, help us grow in terms of meeting those needs. So at this point, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, it was a great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next up is our Student Health Services, Cam Powers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you all tonight and give you an update on school health services. Let's see. So I'm just going to give you an overview of some of our district-wide statistics. A lot of this data, as you probably recall, we gather from our Student Health Emergency Cards, which parents fill out at the beginning of every school year, and this is based on a 98% return rate. We always strive for 100%, but there's always a few that we are missing. So our health insurance statistics are good. 97% of our students report that they have health insurance. As you can see, 71% are private and 26% are enrolled in Mass Health. That's about the same as we've, we've seen over the last few years. What has improved dramatically over the last four years is our number of students who have dental insurance. I know back when I started, it was less than 50% of our students had dental insurance, and now we're up to 82%, which is really a wonderful increase. And I think a lot of that has to do with the Affordable Care Act and also increased access to, to dental care in our town. Several years ago, when I started, we had two Mass Health dental providers in Plymouth, and I think last year, we got up to 11, and now we're at 10. So we have many more dentists that are able to provide oral health care to our students, and you'll see, I'll be sharing some of our other oral health statistics when I talk about our polished dental program in a little bit. Potassium iodide, as you know, we have a potassium iodide program in the district because we are host to the Nucleopower Plant. So again, we have 90% of our students that are, that are registered to receive potassium iodide should we have the need to do that, and that program has been ongoing for many years, and hopefully will only be ongoing for another few. We'll be able to discontinue that program if and when they close the nuclear plant here in Plymouth. So moving on, as you know, one of the things that school nurses do annually is student health screenings, and these are screenings that are mandated by the Mass Department of Public Health, and as we have done for many years, we screen students for BMI or Body Mass Index, vision, hearing, and postural screening. The BMI, we screen grades 1, 4, 7, and 10. We no longer send out referral letters or letters for children that fall out of the normal range. That was discontinued a few years back. It used to be part of the screening guidelines, but the Department of Public Health stopped that a few years ago, so those referrals are no longer made, although we do still provide education. provide educational material to students and families. Vision, we do pre-K to grade five and then grade seven and ten. Same thing with hearing and then postural screening, we do grades five to nine. So, the reason that the hearing have a few more numbers in it than the vision is, although it's the same number of students that get screened, hearing tends to be, have a slightly higher failure rate than vision for school screenings, and there's many reasons for that. Sometimes kids are, have an ear infection or may have wax or fluid in their ear. So, normally what we do is, any student that fails either vision or hearing screening, they're brought back in two to four weeks for a rescreening. And then, if they fail that second screening, they get referred out to their primary care provider for a more detailed examination. Of note, I just wanted to point this out for our students who are at risk for being overweight or obese. We have seen, we did see an increase in that last year. We had been hovering around thirty percent, which had been down from, we were thirty-three, thirty-four percent for the years two thousand nine to two thousand twelve. I don't have all of the full district statistics in yet for this year, but that's something that I think we need to keep a close eye on because I'm very curious to see if that correlates with our lack of sending out information routinely and referrals for screening for those students that are identified as either being overweight or in the obese weight category. So, that's, I think that's quite a jump in a year from thirty to thirty-four percent, so we'll see where we go with that this year and moving forward. And I just changed the presentation of this a little bit this year, just to give you an idea of the student health office trends. As I think we all know, our student population has decreased in the district over the last several years, but that is not reflective in health office activity. You can see we've had a steady increase the last few years have been, you know, pretty steady and around eight thousand plus. So, and what I looked at for this year through the end of March, through the, I'm sorry, through the middle of April, we're right on target to be about the same as last year. And I think we're seeing increased health office visits because of the increased number of children with special healthcare needs, the increase in students with mental and behavioral health disorders that we're seeing in the, that the nurses are evaluating in the health office. So, and we'll look specifically at some of those numbers. This, oh, so this is, I'm sorry, this is a little out of order, this should have been previous. The oral health screenings and treatment, so as you recall, Plymouth is a town that does not fluorinate our water, so because of that, we offer the fluoride mouth rinse program to students in grades two and three. That's offered to us free of charge from the Department of Public Health Oral Health Program. And we have about fifty percent of students in the second and third grade participate in that, which is about the same as last year. I'd like to get that number up, and we've been trying to, but it seems like we get to fifty percent and we haven't been able to push that any further up, but we will continue to try to do that. And Polished LLC, as you recall, is our oral hygienist program that we are currently in our sixth year, and we offer this service, excuse me, to all of our elementary and middle school students. And twice a year, a team of hygienists come in to each school, and they do examinations, cleanings, fluoride varnish, and then sealants are applied if there is an indication for that, and that's mostly in the younger students. We have seen a decrease in the participation rate of the program in our schools, and I think that's related to the fact that we have, through this program, we've actually gotten more kids to have dental homes or to find a dentist that they can see routinely, because one of the things that we do with this program is, if the hygienist sees a student that doesn't have a dentist, we try to connect them with the school nurse to get a dental home so that they can have follow-up care. So, I think that's working. I haven't looked specifically at the exact numbers, but the trend does seem to correlate with the increased number of kids with dentist, dental health insurance, and, you know, the decreased utilization of this program. And as always, it's always good to see that we have children that are treated free of charge if they do not have dental insurance. So, there's no charge for this program to any family. If they do have dental health insurance, they are billed, but if there's no dental health insurance, no one is denied the program, and they get the services free of charge. Okay. I just wanted to, I think, first started talking about this last year, just in regards to the increased number of students we're seeing with mental and behavioral health issues within our school. So, this is not a direct way of measuring it, but it is one measure that we can look at in school health services. Just, these are just the number of doses of psychotropic medications that we've administered in our health offices that the nurses administer, and you can see over the years just what a dramatic increase that is. And the one thing I would say about this, I really think that this is just the tip of the iceberg, because over the last several years, so many of these medications, as well as other categories of medications, have become, they've developed what we call long-acting medications that are only administered once a day or twice a day. So, many children, and we've seen this, especially on our extended-day field trips and overnight field trips, many students do get psychotropic medications that we don't even know about because the parents are giving them at home and don't feel the need to share that information with us until, you know, a situation arises where we have to administer it. So, we've been, when we first started doing the, you know, overnight field trips, we were shocked at the amount of medications that were showing up at the health office and the number of medications students were on that we were unaware of. So, as I said, I think this is just the tip of the iceberg, but definitely shows the trend of what we're seeing with our students. Excuse me. Okay, now back to just looking at the total special healthcare needs of our students. We've seen, again, an increase of over two hundred reported special healthcare needs in our students this year, and we'll look more specifically at what those numbers represent. So, we've definitely seen an increase in students with allergies, specifically life-threatening allergies to food. We've seen a spike of about fifty students this year, an increase in the number of children with asthma, although that number you can see has fluctuated. Generally, about ten percent of students in the community have asthma, so we have been slightly above that, which is not unusual for, you know, for different communities have ten to twelve percent. So, again, the students with ADHD, we saw an increase in reporting. It seemed like last year we had a slight decrease in reporting with some of these numbers, so, you know, we get our statistics from our, by parent report with the information that they supply us with, and also on the physical examination records that we get from healthcare providers, so what's listed on there as special needs. So, it reflects trends, but I think there are some things on that the children probably have that aren't on here, and I think that's maybe why we see a slight variation in what's reported, because we do need to rely somewhat on parent report for this. So, just looking specifically at some of the numbers, as I said, you can see that there's a increase in students with life-threatening food allergies, and I'll tell you, that correlates exactly with the number of EpiPens we have. We have two hundred ninety-nine prescriptions for EpiPens this year. So, I know that that number is accurate, and that is a reflection, an increase from last year. Slight increase, as I said, in the number of reported students with asthma. We have had an increase, although it doesn't look like much. We're actually, even since I did this slide two weeks ago, have another newly diagnosed child with diabetes in the district, so we now have thirty-six. And we have seen a trend with younger and younger children being diagnosed. This is the first year we've had a preschool child with diabetes, as well as we have a kindergartner and a first grader. So, this is the first and second year we've seen kids that young. Usually, it's middle, elementary, middle and high school where we see that incident. So, it seems like kids are getting diagnosed younger. Let's see here. A slight increase in, as we saw in the graph bar, with students with ADHD. Again, depression, we saw a spike, and the one thing that I wished I had teased out of this, just two years ago, the, we get this data, it's by patient report, but also it gets teased out in our electronic health record that we send into the DPH. We send a monthly activities report to the DPH, and one of the categories that our report pulls out now that hadn't until last year is anxiety as a specific disorder. And out of that number, that three hundred and fifty-two that you're seeing for this year, a hundred and thirty-four of those are students with anxiety. Okay. I just don't have statistics prior to 2014, fifteen for that, but we will get that in there moving forward. But that's a significant number, and I think that's a reflection of the increase in the students that we're seeing with psychotropic medications. Okay, our concussion statistics. This is, as you know, we have had the concussion regulations in effect now since 2012, 2011, 2012. So, as I reported last year, we did see a decreasing trend in the number of students that were diagnosed with concussions, those middle years of 2012, thirteen, and 2013 and fourteen. Those were the peak years. I think that's when everybody's awareness was at its peak, and I think we may have even seen a little bit of overzealousness and overdiagnosis with that. It seemed like everybody had a concussion if they had any, you know, slight headache or whatever. So, I think the pendulum has swung from one extreme to the other and I think is now balancing out somewhat in the middle. Even though our statistics, the green bar is for this year, what I expect to see, those statistics just go through the end of March for this year, but looking at where we were last March, we are continuing to see a decrease in the number of statistics, especially at the high school level. So, I expect that that trend will continue to decrease. And I think, you know, we've done a good job with education and awareness, especially with our high school and middle school athletes. As you know, the concussion regulations mandate that we monitor concussions only in the middle and high schools, but we, as part of our program, opted to include the elementary schools as well. So, we do the same kind of teaching and education and monitoring for those students as well. So, I hope that trend continues. Okay, I'd just like to go over some general school health things. We've talked every year about the Essential School Health Services Grant, which we've had now since 2001, and that's an annual grant that we get from the Department of Public Health. And although those funds have been cut back over the several years that we've had it, we have had steady funding of about a hundred and thousand dollars per year. Right now, we're in, we're completing our first year of a two-year grant cycle, so we're guaranteed pending budget approval at the state level to have that, those funds available through next year. And that, the Essential School Health Service Grant is really to support school health services. They allow us to provide extra staffing for student health screenings, health education. They, it provides a stipend for our substitute nurses beyond what the district pays. We also continue to fund point four of one of the nurses at North High School and point four of our district-wide substitute nurse. Also funds continuing education and school health programs that school nurses are mandated to attend. And also, part of our funds go to Carver and Rising Tide because we provide mentorship and guidance for them, which we have for many years. In addition to that, we did run our annual seasonal flu clinic back in November. We gave out a hundred and ninety immunizations, and I apologize, I should say administered to PK through high school, so grade twelve, somehow that got dropped off. So, that was about the same as we administered last year, which was, which was an increase from the drop-off we had seen for the previous years. And as you know, we instituted the naloxone or Narcan program this year, which was strongly recommended by the Department of Public Health at all public schools institute this program of stocking a dose of Narcan in every health office. So, with your support and the support of Dr. Blasberg, our school physician, we were able to do that. All our nurses are trained, and I'm happy to report we have not administered any doses. Although, in my statewide meeting in March, there have been five school districts at that point that had administered Narcan, you know, to someone in the school, in the school setting. Although, all five doses were not given to students, they were given to either family members or visitors who were in the school and experienced symptoms of overdose while visiting or being in the school building, which was really the push to have it in every school and not just in the, you know, the high schools where you would expect if students were using drugs, you'd see it more at that level. Okay. And in addition to that, there's a new screening program which is being implemented, mandated again by the DPH. It is part of the opioid bill that was passed into law last month by Governor Baker, and it's called ESPERT, and ESPERT is an acronym for Screening in Brief Intervention and Referral for Treatment. In anticipation of the ESPERT being mandated starting in school year 2017, eighteen, the DPH made funds available just in February for schools to pilot the program next year. So, we were fortunate that we applied for the grant and were able to get it. So, several of, all of our high school nurses and several of the guidance adjustment school psychologists, the two high school principals, and some of our administrators attended the ESPERT training, which was provided by the DPH. The training was mandated for all who are participating in the pilot program. So, this is really good. The law is that the ESPERT screening will be mandated in one middle school and one high school grade, again, beginning in school year 2017 and 2018. For this grant purpose, we are implementing it in one grade, and we opted to start with the high school, so we're going to do it in the ninth grade. And it uses a very well-evidence-based research tool that was developed at Children's Hospital. It's a brief questionnaire that has six questions that the nurse will ask. And again, it's a screening program, it's not to diagnose, but to identify students who may be at risk for or using alcohol or drugs that, you know, may be, may be an issue. So, the grant funds that we got provided the funding for, you know, the trainings, also providing funding for educational materials and, again, for staffing to cover us for the screenings. So, we'll be implementing that starting next So, we'll be implementing that starting next year. And then, just as you know, the school nurses participate in a lot of education and health promotion activities, as well as seeing students in the health office. This year, every year at the elementary level, there's many individual elementary school fairs. Nathaniel Morton had a parent health and wellness fair in the evening that was quite well-attended. Many of our schools participate in national health-related days, such as Healthy Lunch Day, Wear Blue for Diabetes, Go Red for Women with Heart Disease, Autism Day, Skin Cancer Awareness. So, the nurses are very involved in promoting education and awareness of many health topics within their individual schools. And as we have for many years, we provide CPR, AED, and EpiPen training for staff, students, custodians, and our, both our JEDCO and First Student Bus Drivers. And PCIS has continued to have, a few years ago, they started a student support group for students with diabetes because they had such a large number. They continue to have nine students with diabetes. So, that program is, that support group is still ongoing and is very, provides a lot of support and education to the students. In addition to the health promotion activities, a lot of the nurses are involved with coordinate spearhead a lot of the programs to support families, as well as students in their health and wellness. So, the Food for Kids Program, which a few of the nurses are very involved in, the Backpack Program you've probably heard about, where students are sent home with a backpack of food for the weekend, and then they bring the backpacks back on Monday, and they're refilled so that they get some healthy nutrition for the weekend and hopefully through the week. Also, just holiday gift programs. And we continue to publish our quarterly Healthy Headlines newsletter. We also participate and help coordinate many staff wellness initiatives. Most of those, the last few years, seem to revolve around weight loss and just providing health teaching care and support for many of our staff. We also continue to support our future generation of nurses. We have for many years precepted our own Plymouth Public Schools senior allied health students. Many of them do a rotation during the senior year in our health offices and work an afternoon for a semester in one of our nurses' offices, where they get to participate actively in helping to care for students and doing health-related projects. We also provide clinical rotations and mentoring for nursing students from UMass Boston. I neglected to put in Quincy College here in Plymouth and also Cape Cod Community College. And I just want to like to mention some of our challenges. As I've said, when I pointed out some of our statistics, we are continuing to see an increased number of younger students with chronic health issues. And the younger students really require a lot more support, hold-handing, as do the parents, and health education, because for many of them, they're newly diagnosed and obviously developmentally younger and need additional support. We continue to see a lot of advances in both medical, in medical technologies that we're seeing in the school. I think at least three-quarters of our students with diabetes have continuous insulin pumps now. Even our preschooler has one. So, it's, and the challenge for the nurses is like four different companies that make these pumps. And even though they do the same thing, they do it a little differently with any, you know, we all have iPhones or different electronics. They all operate a little differently, even though the goal is the same for what they do. We have students with gastrostomy tube feedings and nasogastric tube feedings that we do in the school setting, and students with, one student with a tracheostomy tube, which is a tube to assist her to breathe through a tube in her neck. And as we've talked about, we are continuing to see a lot of students with behavioral and emotional health issues. Again, just requiring additional assessment and sort of just counseling and support time in the health office. The nurses are having, and to participate in more reentry meetings, because I think we're seeing more students hospitalized and then coming back more quickly into, you know, they're discharged from the hospital one day and they're back in school the next day, which is great to get them back into their structured environment. But there's a lot we need to put in place to have them be successful in coming back to school. And that requires a lot of collaboration with, you know, different members, school psychologists, guidance councils, et cetera, some of the people we've mentioned. And we talked about the psychotropic medications and concussions. And then, just again, we're seeing an increased number of extracurricular activities and field trips that require a student, school nurse presence. And I, you know, I applaud the number of activities that we have for our students because I think that supports the health and well-being and, you know, gives them things to do outside of school hours when they, that time, late afternoon, early evening, when it's, when kids don't have enough to do, they can get themselves into trouble sometimes. So, I think we are providing a lot more activities. But again, because we have so many children with special health needs, anything that's a school-sponsored program, we are required to provide a school nurse if the student requires that for their care. And I just listed a few of the programs where we provide a lot of support, the visual and performing arts programs, field trips, especially field trips that are off-hours, out-of-state and overnight. Doesn't seem like there's been as many out-of-state and overnight field trips that have required a nurse this year, which is good. And I think I've mentioned in the past, the out-of-state trips are particularly challenging for us because school nurses are only licensed to practice in the state where they're licensed, so Massachusetts. So, it requires a process of notifying the Board of Registration and Nursing to the state where the field trip is going and giving the nurses information so that they can have reciprocity of their license granted for the duration of the field trip. So, it just adds another dimension, another step in the process. Best Buddies Program, again, meets twice a week after school and has evening and weekend activities. And we've had to supply a school nurse for all of their activities, as well as the new Unified Sports Program that was started a few weeks ago. So... And just lastly, all of that I've talked about is really creates more of a challenge for our substitute nurses. We really saw the need to beef up our substitute nurse pool, and we did do that this year. We oriented eleven new sub-nurses in the fall. So, now we have a substitute nurse pool of sixteen nurses. We've really tried to regionalize them with either specific schools or specific grade levels so that they can get to know students in, you know, within each building, because it's really hard. And some nurses, like all of us, are more comfortable working with one grade level versus another. So, we've made a lot of progress with that this year, but we do have a cadre of students that really do require one of our nurses to go with them when they're going off-site, just because of their complexities and their unique needs. So... And that's it. I would just like to finish by just saying that, you know, I think over the years, even over my seven years here, the role of the school nurse has really grown and changed a lot. You know, mentioned a lot of the things that we do. We're frontline for public health with all of the state screenings that we do to try to identify potential health problems. We treat acute illnesses and injuries in the school setting. You know, we do a lot of psychosocial and counseling for students that have mental and behavioral health issues, as well as try to support families, you know, in the home setting. So, I think our school nurses do a terrific job, and it's kind of appropriate for me to be here this week, because it is National Nurses Week, and Wednesday is National School Nurses Day. So, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the team of nurses, because we really do have a really, really great and strong group that really provide excellent care to all of our students. And with that, I'll close and entertain. Any questions you may have?
I have a couple. Great presentation, it always is. Thank you. I have a couple of questions on two different topics. First one is predictable. It's the concussion topic. But I just want to tell you, tell you two instances that I think are very pertinent to the data. I was refereeing a soccer game at PCIS of eighth graders last fall. And as a mental health professional, it was very clear to me that the boy had sustained a concussion. There was no questions. I mean, I could see the symptoms. He was complaining about vision, and he didn't want the sun to touch his eyes. And you really could see he was concussed. But there was debate on the sidelines with the boy and the family whether or not this was a concussion or not. And that always concerns me. It was crystal clear it was concussion. Now, and I went to a state referee meeting, and we were told, you know, stay out of those discussions, and I have to stay out of those discussions. Yesterday, I was refereeing a soccer game at Plymouth North High School, girl soccer game. And the keeper was clearly concussed. The same debate occurred on the sidelines. I could hear it. I was paying attention to it, having experienced the incident at PCIS yet last year. And I heard the player say to her father, "No, no, 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 no. I don't have a concussion." So, you know, the data tells us the numbers are down, but the students, as I told you last year, are deliberately under-reporting, because they know what's going to happen. You're not going to play for four or five games as soon as you report that. So, I just wanted to pass that along, because it continues to go on like that. And I have those two instances.
Yes. You know, I, the guidelines are clear and our policy is clear. It should not be, if the student has an injury and it's observed by the adult, the coach, the student should be removed from play immediately and should not return to play until they're evaluated by a healthcare provider. That's the law. That's our policy. That's our protocol. And...
And that's statewide by this point. It really is.
Yes, yes. I agree. And, you know, I think, I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Sorenson, because I know you expressed that concern last year. You know, certainly, what we need to do on our end then is to reinforce that with our coaches, because it's not up to the student. The students will want to stay in.
Certainly not. Right. Okay, let me change the topic, because I was reading from the Legislative Bulletin on House Bill forty fifty-six on the opioid. And it says that the substance abuse screening will not be implemented until the school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And your slide says that mandated starting is sixteen seventeen. So, that was the slide on addiction. Now, fine if we want to start it early, but what concerns me a little bit, you have sixteen seventeen, and the statute says seventeen, eighteen.
That's, my slide is incorrect. I apologize. Our pilot program is being implemented in the ninth grade is in sixteen seventeen, and then the...
Mandated program, the following...
For one medical, middle and one high school. So, I apologize. I...
I think that's important, because I noticed even in the obesity, there were fifteen families who chose not to participate in the screening or answer the questions. We have to give parents the right to not, I don't think it's, I don't think we should, but we have to by statute, give the parents a right to not participate in the screening. And I don't think we can get that all in place by September. That's why I bring that up.
Yes. We, all of our screenings, parents have the right to opt out. So, we have a process for that at each school to notify parents that the screenings are going to take place. And typically, the ones that student, hardly anybody opts out of vision or hearing, you know, unless they just went to their provider and had an exam. But with the BMI and also with the postural screening, we see if some students opt out, because they don't want that type...
How will that work with the opiate screening? We'll send a notice home saying that next Tuesday, we're going to ask questions?
Yes. We will let parents know at each of the two high schools that the screening will take place. And we'll do, we will do some education with the families about it. We literally just were trained ourselves in April. This is all happening very quickly. But, yeah, so they, parents will be notified. We'll do some education about what the program is, and they will be given the opportunity to opt out of it.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for pointing that out, because that needs to be corrected. I apologize for that.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. That was a great presentation, like always.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Ann.
So, eight point one, Transportation Contract Extension. I'm assuming Mr. Costin or Dr. Myssis?
Thank you. The school committee in two thousand and twelve entered into a five-year contract with First Student for Transportation Services. The contract is based upon a three-year initial term with two one-year renewals. Last year, we renewed for the fourth year, and I'm recommending for next year, we renew for the fifth and final year.
I'll move that we renew the contract for an additional year.
Do we have a second?
Blessings.
Second. Do we have any discussion, any questions? And call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous? Now, our next is our public hearing. So, I declare our public hearing open. And we have this every year. Dr. Myssis, I don't know if you want to review it?
Yes, I'd like to kind of preface the hearing. The school committee, every year, has the option to consider school choice for the school district as set forth by Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B. This provision is available to school district to consider out-of-town, out-of-district students to attend a public school. And the tuition from that individual in their town would travel to the receiving district. The sending district would submit those tuition dollars to the receiving district. The Plymouth Public Schools has not participated in a school choice program. It has never moved forward with accepting of school choice. We do have school choice. Sometimes, people get confused. We offer a in-district, out-of-district transfer at the elementary and middle school, but that's completely different than school choice, where an individual can come from out of the town of Plymouth and enter into one of our schools, where the sending district would then pay that tuition to the receiving district that would be Plymouth. In this case, my recommendation is that we remain a district that does not accept school choice. And I make that recommendation to the committee this evening.
Have any questions?
Into the public hearing, just make sure there's nobody who wants to address it.
Public who wants to discuss the hearing on school choice? Nobody? Okay. All right. Any questions from the committee?
Move the recommendation administration.
Dr. Sorenson, do I have a second? Mrs. Betts? All in favor? Is that everybody? Okay, just sorry. Unanimous.
And declare it closed.
Oh, and then I declare the, oh, the public hearing for school choice closed. Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. All right. Our next piece is the superintendent's annual evaluation. And I'm just going to quickly go over the first page, not too, not too in-depth, but you exceeded both our professional practice goals and your student learning goals, and then met the district improvement goals. Overall this, I know that, speaking for, I think, everybody, the evaluation tool this year was a lot easier to put together with all the information that you provided. So, thank you so much for doing that. The comments that, the overall comments we have is this year, and these come from everybody, as well as Dennis and I put it together, but this isn't from Dennis, or Mr. Bagley, sorry. This year, Dr. Myssis has met or exceeded all of the goals set for him by the Plymouth School Committee and has performed at a proficient or exemplary level on all the state standards set for the superintendent. That is an impressive accomplishment and one that the committee is extremely pleased with. I've been the chair of the Plymouth School Committee, that's Dennis. Mr. Bagley has been the chair of the Plymouth School Committee for several years now, and has written several evaluations for Dr. Sorenson during this time. And I'm always impressed with how he is never content to rest on his accomplishments. Every year, Dr. Every year, Dr. Miasis finds new and creative ways to breathe new life into the curriculum and the day-to-day operations of the district. He isn't afraid to try new things, isn't equally unafraid to say when something didn't work or could work better. The town of Plymouth is lucky to have our superintendent of Dr. Miasis' quality and stature, and we eagerly look forward to the years ahead and what they will hold for our children, employees, and citizens at large. So, thank you so much, Dr. Soren... I mean, Dr. Sorenson, as I look at you and then say, "Dr. Miasis."
If I may?
Yes, of course.
Thank you for the process. I think, I do hope that our staff, our teachers, and even my direct staff understand that the new evaluation system is much more rigorous than it has been. And I think we all have to go through it, but I think at the end, when I submitted that document to you last week, to me, it was a reflection of the work of my team and the work of some absolutely wonderful staff that we have in our school district. I think I mentioned this in my comments that I wrote. I mean, we have lots of room for improvement, but I am very encouraged that we have so many people in our district that are so motivated to make this an outstanding school district. So, with that said, I'm very appreciative to be part of a great team, and that's Nancy's included in that, as well as every staff member, support staff member. I think we're on a... I think we're on a good path, but I will tell you, our work's going to be very difficult in the years to come. So, we do have a lot of work, we have high expectations, the community has high expectations. So, I think the evaluation process is something that's needed, and it is that progress monitoring for ourselves. So, with that said, thank you for the evaluation, and we'll continue to strive for a better district.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. School fundraisers? Anybody have any questions on school fundraisers? All right. Reports and proposals from committee members? Ms. Hung?
The first thing that I wanted to... I'm sorry. I just wanted to give an update on the Shishigahama visit that's happening this summer. I did get an email from Olivia Slaton this week, and it looks like they'll be coming from August 1st to August 10th. They'll be in Plymouth. I believe they're going to be arriving around 6:30 at night to Logan, leaving Plymouth on the 7th and spending a couple of days in Boston. We have quite a large delegation coming this year. I don't know if... I know, Dr... I think I...
Yeah, I got that.
It looks like we're having nine adults.
Wow, that's awesome.
And nine students.
Wow.
Which is going to be a challenge because we do, you know, we do pay for their hotels and... Three of the... I'm going to just pull up my email so I have all the correct information. Three of the adults that are coming are going to be teachers. And what they really want to do this year is focus on the educational aspect of the trip. And the reason that they're having the three teachers come is they really want to have a lot of opportunities for them to make some mingle with teachers here, be really involved. I know it's August, but if we can work something out, I'm going to try and find host families for the teachers so that way they can stay with families and get immersed into our culture a little bit more. Actually, this week in Shishigahama, they're having an American festival for three days, which is really fun. But they're really focusing a lot on this relationship. I'm just going to write what he said. "The new mayor has been implementing English education and globalization incentives, starting with introducing the children of Shishigahama to foreigners and native English language at the preschool level." That's part of what... And they've also... They're hiring two CIRs, which is Olivia's position when she leaves. And throughout the year, both CIRs will be attending preschools on a weekly basis to get the kids used to hearing English, as well as give them a friendly outlook on foreigners in general. So, you know, that's really exciting. Of and beyond that, so for the adults, we have the new mayor, Cora Terazawa, and he has been to Plymouth before as a deputy mayor, I believe. Ben Takahashi, who's the Kokomora Office Director, who we all know.
Artist.
Yeah, the artist. He's coming, as well as one of his daughters, who my daughter stayed with, so we're going to be hosting her. The superintendent will be coming. Then we've met him, he's come a couple of times. A Shishigahama Town Councilman, three educators, one from the elementary and one from... I'm sorry, two from elementary level, one from middle school. Nome Sado, who is coming.
Oh, Nome.
Who came as a student.
Wow.
Now, she has a big family, and actually, one of her daughters is coming with her as well. The Whiting's, who... They... Her family hosted the Whiting's, and they've actually already offered to host both Naomi and Namie. And Yurimi is coming as well. So, both Yurimi and Nome speak fluent English. Because there won't be a translator coming with the group. The CSRs are not going to be hired. They're not starting until after they come back, and Olivia is leaving for maternity leave before. So, we on the DDC have been talking about getting our own translator on this.
Jamie around?
Well, Jamie, but we've also been talking about actually getting somebody... If Jamie can't do it, there's been some discussions about possibly getting an intern as well. So, that's something that we're working on. I did ask them a little bit about what they liked to do the last time they were here, so they did give us some suggestions. They enjoyed going to the Pilgrims game, they enjoyed Dr. Sorenson's house, which he's offered again, too, to have an event for the kids. They really just want... The adults just want to... I mean, the main thing that they're telling me is they just want to mingle with us as much as possible and spend time with us.
Question for you. So, how many students are coming?
Nine.
Nine students, and the rest are adults all?
Nine students, nine adults.
And what's the age?
The ages of the students are...
Middle?
I actually have it. One high school, three middle... One high school girl, three middle school girls, one middle school boy, two elementary girls, and two elementary boys.
Wow.
So, yes. So, we'll be getting bios and all that information soon. I've already had three or four families offered to host.
Yeah, it's easy to forget.
I'll...
We always...
I would host... You know, I think it's going to be a dilemma somewhat with the hotel rooms.
Yes, yeah. And Liz Rhea was offered to host, too, so instead of giving her a student, which she thought, we can give her a teacher.
I'll take...
We always...
I have one room, so...
Yeah, we always put the teachers and Yurimi in a host family. This last time or whatever, they put her in a hotel, but really, she's always been in a host family, and she usually wants to go to the same one, but whatever, she can go to any host family.
Yep, we've got that covered, so, yeah, we're gonna...
So, that'll take a lot of... The pre-councilman, the mayor, and, yeah, some of them have to...
There's going to be about six that are going to need hotel rooms.
Six are going to be in the hotel.
What I would suggest is maybe in the next month, we have a planning activity meeting.
Yes. And Janet Young and I have already talked about that, just to start.
Walk through the days.
Yep.
And also, transportation in and around town. So, we do... Can probably help with one of the propane smaller buses to get transport, but we can arrange all that, we just want to... I mean, it's going to be a big group.
And a couple of weeks ago, all the adults, well, a large group of adults that had been over there met and threw out some ideas as well on things to do. That would mimic... You know, we always say there's always a little bit of inequity about what happens when we go there to here, so there are a lot of opinions, and a lot of people have given suggestions, so we're going to take them and do the best that we can with them and try and have a great experience for them.
It will be.
Absolutely.
It'll work out.
So, yeah, that's it. I'm just happy to finally have some dates so that we... Because we are nervous about booking the hotel rooms.
That's early.
That's early. Olivia did a good job.
Yeah.
Usually, they don't...
It's very early.
It would be the new mayor, too. I don't know.
I've been pressuring them a little bit, too.
But even though pressured, it never worked because they just do things in their own time. They just have a different kind of a schedule.
Dr. Sorenson?
Different topic. Are we switching topics?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to report to the committee that last month, I spent a day with the scholarship committee awarding, working on the awarding of the scholarships for this year for the graduating class. And I want to report to the committee, based on our conversation and the support of the committee, we were able to implement a couple of significant changes in the process that, now that I've seen in action. It needs a little tweaking, but I think it's working well, and I'll tell you what they are. One of the main changes was that students required to write an essay as part of their application process for scholarship. And those essays were read by the English department, and they were given a rating. And so, every student had a rating for their essay. They also had to submit a high-quality application itself, and those applications were also given a rating. So, now, any given applicant for an applicant would not only have a rating for their essay, they have a rating for their application itself. The third thing that I think was very significant that we sort of... We were doing, but we've fine-tuned it, is making sure financial need plays a larger role, particularly in those scholarships that say financial need. And so, not only did we have the EFC, in years past, not every student's EFC was presented. Now, it's a requirement. All EFCs were presented, expected family contribution. But in addition to that, and this wasn't published, but it was at the meeting, the chair of the meeting had free and reduced lunch names as well. So, if there was debate over the EFC, we could look up or, you know, privately look up and determine whether or not that family also met requirement for free and reduced lunches. So, the combination of those two things, plus, I mean, it really improved the process that I really think has been a really good change, and I appreciate the committee's support. I had met with the superintendent and some of the administrators last June to work this out. So, the last part of my presentation tonight is, I want to tell the committee that I really don't feel that school committee participation on this subcommittee is necessary. We've made some good changes. Maybe there's a way that we can monitor it, but for me to sit there a whole day, I have nothing to say. I don't know those students, and I shouldn't say something. I can certainly read the data, but everybody can read the data. So, there's really no participation from a school committee. And I think this, the committee, the scholarship committee, does a very, very good job of trying to... We have this list of students and this much money, and we have to sort of work it in an equitable fashion, and that's what they spend the day doing. So, for a school committee person to give up a whole day, I think is, without any input, is really kind of unreasonable. So, my recommendation back to the committee is, perhaps there should be a subcommittee that we don't get assigned to. Having said that, I recognize that if we hadn't participated, then we wouldn't have made these changes. So, it's sort of like a little bit of this and a little bit of that, but it's a great... It's a big commitment for no input, I think. So, there's my report, and I don't know what the committee feels.
Has anyone else on the committee been on?
I've been on, yeah.
I think when we had originally had been a member of the committee was for the Holmes Tavern Alley Scholarship.
That's different, that's different.
And that's different, and that was different because I don't think that we were on that originally.
We weren't on that.
As being a part... As a part of the Holmes Tavern Alley Scholarship, we had talked about then looking into the scholarship program, the local scholarships, and how those were run in comparison to the two. So, I think that's where it came about.
Well, I thoroughly agree, because I participated for two years on Holmes Tavern Alley, and that's a whole different approach. Everybody participates in that because you evaluate the applications in front of you. But this is very different.
Microphone, I don't think it might. Sorry. I couldn't get your attention.
Okay.
But we can pass that on back to the chair.
But Holmes Tavern Alley isn't the sheer, is it?
No, no, it may come back.
No.
No, no, it'll come back.
It will, but not... It's not projected.
Not for a while.
Yeah, we'll give you an update on that when we get more information, okay?
Okay, I'll pass that on. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I attended... Oops, sorry about that. I attended the Masque Day on the Hill and represented the district. There was no students, no administration, or no other members, so it was just me. So, it was good. I listened to all the speeches, we had lunch. Plymouth South prepared some of the food that was there and met with our local delegation, so, you know, it was a good day.
Very good. Thank you.
Good, that's great. Anybody else?
That was very unusual.
I'll tell you, just if I...
Oh, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. It's just one of those years. I mean, I've gone for seven years in a row, and it just seemed like when we started assembling this thing, it just fell apart. I know we had one student that could make it. Usually, we had the whole group of students go, but thank you for attending, and Mr. Morgan, we appreciate you representing the district. And our students, of course, from South were serving, so they did a good job there. Thank you.
I have one thing myself. The Pan-Mas Kids Ride is happening on June 26th, and it's going to be at Charge Pond this year from 9:00 to about noon. It's a great event for all the kids, so if anybody's interested...
What's the date?
The 26th of June. They're going to have a booth. So, hopefully, when we come back from our ride and we collapse at North, they'll have a beautiful booth there. Trying to get everybody there who's excited to participate.
Can we invite us? Yes.
Exactly. So, they're very excited that they get to be there when we come back, so...
Can we ride with them on that day, maybe?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I'm on the committee. Katie wouldn't care.
I'd have to go just ride around with the kids.
Yeah, it's a great loop. I did it, yes. I did it Friday.
Great.
Okay, I'll ask Katie.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have is the Plymouth Building Committee.
We're just having a debate here. Who's going to give this report?
Who needs to do it?
I left it on my desk.
Marty, I count on you to bring the notes.
This time I didn't.
And you always do, so... Okay, well, we did meet. Here, I have my notes here.
Good.
April 14th was our last meeting.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Just to review real quickly, we had a presentation on the airport building, and that's going forward, and we agreed with the plan. The parking garage, we're still... That's still being discussed. So, that goes on. The town hall is currently at 12 and 1/2% complete, moving along on schedule, nothing particularly troublesome, a little difficulty with some Verizon polls, but they're working on that. The Sims House, a lot of concerns over that. It's over budget, and they're trying to sort of bring it down to inter-budget. Still being planned for completion in May of 2017. And now to Plymouth South High School. Anybody who's been there, it just, you know, I was there just the other day. With some of the walls going up on the steel, it even looks bigger. I mean, the building is just amazing in its size and scope. It's 17% complete at this point. It's on budget. Here, again, there are no glitches. The reports we're getting is, and I'm sure Dr. Miasis can speak to this, having attended all of those meetings, it's moving along as we expected. The fields are the big concern right now, and of course, they have to be turned over The fields are the big concern right now, and of course, they have to be turned over in a few months, and as far as they were being told, it's, that's right on schedule. The North Plymouth Fire Station, we discussed that, I don't need to go over that. White Horse Beach Restrooms, we're discussing them as well. So, that's where we are.
I just wanted to add, wait a minute. Oh, about the parking garage, because it's going to involve the new town hall. Yeah, although it's, it's a separate budget, it's, it's, but it is involving. It's going to be like a two-story garage. You're going to be able to go in from, to, to one, one story from outside and the other one from another, from, you know, so there's no up and down traffic going in.
Let me clarify the point, because you're, you're doing an admirable job, but it needs help. It's on a hill.
It's on a hill. It's up in Coles Hill where that one is, is now. They're just going to have two layers so that they have more parking.
And it's being proposed as a change order so that it can be incorporated into the, the town hall. And we voted that, we voted it as a change order. And I don't know, that doesn't mean it's going to go, come to fruition, but we took the first main step.
Yep. And on the, on the, the Sims House, what they've, what they've mainly cut right now, because they have to have an elevator and, and all, the elevator won't go to the third floor, and the kitchen, they're going to map out the kitchen and build the kitchen structure, but there will be nothing in it. That's how they had to cut the budget. They cannot, so going forward, they're going to have to do fundraisers or something to be able to put any appliances or cabinets or anything in that building.
Great, thank you. Next one, we have the accounts payable warrant, Ms. Hunt?
Yes. I'm going to make sure I catch up here. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report for the warrant, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S zero five zero five one six dated May fifth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-three cents as presented.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Burgess, do I have any, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Now, we have our meetings from March seventh, school committee meeting?
Will the minutes be accepted as presented?
Dr. Swornton, do it.
The March seventh one?
Yes, March seventh. Mrs. Burgess, second. Do I have any question, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay.
Okay, so I have Mr. Morgan abstaining.
Obsteing.
Ms. Hunt abstaining.
Ms. Betts, is you? No, okay, you're, okay, sorry.
Okay, we're good.
Awesome. All right, the next set of minutes is March seventh, two thousand and sixteen, executive session.
I move the minutes be accepted as presented.
Dr. Swornton, Mrs. Burgess, second. Any discussion? Any, all right, all in favor?
This is March seventh?
Yes, March seventh, executive. All abstained? Same, too.
Okay, hold on one second here. I'm one step behind you, so Dr. Swornton moved. Seconded by Mrs. Burgess, and we had the same abstentions.
Oh, now.
So, I had Mr. Morgan.
And Ms. Hunt.
And Ms. Hunt.
Point to you, sorry. I don't mean to point.
It's the first meeting I've missed in four years.
All right, our next meeting, our March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, school committee meeting minutes.
I'll move to accept the minutes as reported.
Ms. Hunt, seconded, any second? Mr. Morgan? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, all abstained? Dr. Swornton, Mrs. Burgess, and Mrs. Betts.
Who's that again, Mrs.?
Dr. Swornton, Mrs. Burgess, and Ms. Betts, abstained.
Gotcha. Okay, good.
All right, and then we have the same day, March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, executive session minutes. Do I have a motion? Mr. Morgan, do I have a second? Ms. Hunt? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All abstaining? Same as before.
Okay.
All right.
I was just asking if we had a warrant.
We did it.
We just did it. We did so fast, you didn't even know.
We have to sign it, but we haven't.
Before we end tonight, this is a special meeting for Ms. Betts. This is her last meeting. She was on the school committee for nine years, so we just want to recognize her with this beautiful plaque. Beautiful plaque that was put together by the town.
And before you adjourn, I want, when Chairman Bagley washes this meeting, we saved an hour with the, I'm not-
If I could, Madam Chair. Just, Ms. Betts, when you have an opportunity and you want to reflect on your time in the district, and you take a look at that plaque, just want you to know that, that represents the work of students and the wood, the wood, the grain, the, I think it really represents your years of service. You know, it's, these are, yeah, nine years of coming to school committee and, and supporting the children. Thank you, and I'm sure the children will appreciate all you've done for the years to come, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting, yes, good luck. We'll call the meeting to end at eight thirty-eight.